All right, good evening. This is the Thursday, August 6, 2020, Special Board of Education meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order. I'm Cara Ceforio, President of the Board of Education. At this time, I'll take the role. Vice President, Margaret Harrell.
Here.
Secretary Karen Stufen.
Present.
Courtney Troutman.
Present.
Beth Hostler.
Here.
Chris Kozinski.
Present.
Mr. Collins is absent. And we have Dr. Moyer's present and six of our cabinet members are present as well. Seven, sorry, RJ. All right, at this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the agenda, next is public comment. As the agenda stated, individuals who wish to make public comment could do so by submitting a comment on the following link that was provided. Submissions received before 6:00 PM on, by today, will be read aloud or summarized after stating the name of the author up to approximately 7:30 PM when we begin our closed session. Emails received after 6:00 PM, which are not read aloud or summarized, will be reviewed by the board. All submissions received before the start of closed session will be made available publicly on the district's website. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Courtney Troutman, who's going to begin reading the public comments. And if you could just say how many we've received and you'll do your best to get through as many as possible.
Thank you. We have received, sorry. A total of 354 email submissions. Of those, approximately 20 were duplicate emails. And I will begin to read. Sean Bowen. Good evening. I'm writing in hopes that the district strongly considers in-person learning daily for most of, our utmost risk students. This includes kids with IEPs, 504s, ELL, or any child that did not learn or progress during the spring e-learning. The district has worked hard with many of these children and run the risk of regression. This regression can last a lifetime. It is not the next three months of remote learning that is at stake. It is a lifetime trajectory. Small groups of these students can operate in person, even if we change to Phase Three of Open Illinois. Please consider this important decision. Kids' lives depend on it. Next comment, Rosie Anglewitz. I thank the board and staff of District 205, thank the board of staff, District 205 for what they have done so far. I have a preschooler with an IEP attending Madison, a kindergartner with an IEP attending Fisher's bilingual program, and a fourth grader at Field. My husband and I both work, and medically, I am high-risk, so our struggle in making a decision was not about my preschooler, even though he has an IEP, as my parents will be helping us, nor my fourth grader, as she can read and with minimal assistance can maneuver her way through e-learning. But my kindergartner. Kindergartners are at a vital crossroads for learning, as they are learning to read, and delays with this fragile age group can cause a domino effect. I understand the concerns from both sides. I believe the plan should be a hybrid approach based on grade level. Kindergarten through third should be the top priority for in-class sessions, because they are learning to read and school is new to them. They are unable to work independently, especially with IEPs. Although it will be difficult for families, fourth and above students are capable of remote learning with less assistance and more focus. This would allow the school buildings, including the high school, to be used for smaller, safer K through third grade classes for families who choose in-person. I think the board and teachers have to recognize that children under the age of eight especially need that structure and attention to be successful. The next comment. Patrick Ryan. Please support the teachers' union and consider going to remote learning until a more well-thought-out plan can be agreed upon. You know the CDC requirements for what is safe. You know what resources you have. Instead of catering to angry entitled parents who expect you to make a miracle, you should be listening to the teachers, the heroes more like it, who keep your district going and who make it excellent. If you had spent all this energy making a robust e-learning plan and creating a safe alternative for parents with no childcare, instead of trying to create an impossible plan, we wouldn't be in this situation. Administrators always tell teachers we need to innovate, adapt, and change, but you are unwilling to do that now yourselves. Now is the time to be creative in how we attack this problem. We can't think of school of how it was, because that's unsafe and that's a dream. Next comment. Vina Kanyale. My name is Vina Kanyale, and I'm a science teacher at York High School. As a science teacher, I've taught my students the importance of analyzing data and using evidence to support a claim. This pandemic has been one intense data analysis lesson, and the question that is getting answered is, is it safe enough to go back to school? In this case, there is no best solution. There's only a right solution. And based on the data, it's not safe to start school in-person. If we can make the decision based on our wants, then all of us, including the teachers, would be back in-person. But it's not safe enough to have a public board meeting, then how can it be safe enough for students and teachers to sit in small classrooms for hours at a time? The right decision is a decision that no one likes, not even teachers. However, it is a decision that guarantees that there won't be an email sent out notifying the community about a student or teacher death. It's a decision that gives time for the district to prepare safety measures to get us back in the building sooner, and it's a decision to limit the trauma of uncertainty and unrest for students, parents, and staff. Please put safety above desires. Let us start remotely and safely. Thank you. Next comment, Maggie DePaulo. Can someone outline a typical day for a child in the classroom? For a child in kindergarten on the autism spectrum, will there be assistance provided to him for acclimation to the classroom in terms of making him comfortable or consoling him if upset? What will goals for a child with social work hours for learning to interact with other children independently look like? Next comment. Kimberly Hoffman. This is a classic case of profit or perception over people. Moving to e-learning does not make D205 weak. It means that you give a shit about the people who make the district look good and perform well in the first place. If you cannot clearly answer questions about teacher and student safety, you should not get to have these quality educators representing your incredibly poor and selfish leader team, leadership team. Let the teachers develop the incredible virtual program they're qualified to develop and let them deliver it from a controlled environment. It's not a hard decision. Next comment, Kelly Rodriguez. I graduated from Edison, Sandberg, and York. This is my 11th year teaching at York. I am now an Elmhurst homeowner. I generally, genuinely love this town, its schools, and see nowhere else as my home. I worry that the open D205 plan is not safe for students or teachers. As a high-risk teacher myself, the anxiety that I feel about safely being in a building that I have called home for over a decade will be enough to affect my ability to deliver the best instruction that I know I am capable of. I know that if I were remote, and my colleagues, I and my colleagues can deliver high-quality, student-centered, and engaging instruction to our beloved students. Please keep us all safe and give us that opportunity. Next comment. Patrick Hayward. Children need to be in school. Tax dollars fund education, and if anyone employed by D205 chooses not to perform, then they should not be compensated. Are there protocols in place to refund taxpayers if the schools don't open? The ETC should not have the authority to call the shots. If schools don't open August 24th in-person, I predict they'll be closed for the remainder of 2020. Next comment, Mary Ann Logson. I would like hybrid learning, but since things, things seem to be turning towards 100% online, I would like to say, I would like to see as much live Zoom or some kind of live classes as possible for high school. There was way too much busy work in the spring. I would like to see my child up every day and doing online classes if she is forced to do 100% e-learning. Next comment. Kim Willard. Although I selected in-person learning, I plan to pull my kids to remote learning in the event that the whole district is not remote by the start of the year. I'd however like them to be with their classmates in a remote class if the district is forced into remote learning. Example, we move back to Phase Three. So I selected the most flexible option. On the other hand, if we continue with in-person learning, it must be considered that full five-day learning means that students are not safely, safely distanced at six feet apart. Let's please consider any something, model, if we are not beginning remote. Thank you. Next comment. Therese Herbert. Sorry. It is irresponsible of the board and administration to subject staff and students to a deadly virus with a modicum of preparation and planning. The entire summer could have been used to construct e-learning strategies that meet curriculum standards and parent expectations. The board was responsible for developing and implementing this. Not every teacher freelances. Your failure to prepare should not result in risking the lives of staff, students, and their families. If it's not safe enough for the adult administration to sit face-to-face, it is ludicrous to ask staff to be in a building with hundreds of youngsters. Your quote plan, close quote, is merely words on paper. No plan at all. Flying by the seat of their pants is negligent. The board's lives are not on the line. You won't even meet in the same room. Teachers are trained to teach material, educate. They're not responsible to feed, provide mental health, activity, or socialization in a global pandemic. Parents must shoulder the responsibility of partnering with the teachers to ensure their children engage and fully participate in e-learning. Remote learning until there is a vaccine is a safe and responsible education. Next comment, Catherine Disterheft. Hello, my name is Catherine Disterhef, and I'm a Spanish teacher at York. I empathize with the 85% of parents that would like to see in-person learning this fall. My oldest child is supposed to be in kindergarten, and I found out last week that her school will begin the year with distance learning. Dropping a child off on the first day of kindergarten is an important milestone. I'm more not having this moment with my own daughter. Both teachers and parents desire the normalcy of beginning this school year in-person, and we both want our children to be safe while receiving the best education possible. In addition, we all have had to deal with childcare issues and the stress of having to work and parent. None of this is easy. Distance learning is not easy for parents, and it's not easy for teachers either. Even though it is a difficult and undesirable situation, I'm writing this comment to advocate that D205 begin the year remote. I believe that this is the only solution to provide a rigorous and high-quality semester that minimizes disruption in learning, while at the same time maintains the safety of our greater community. The first thematic unit of the year in my Spanish IV ACP class is called "My Community." During the introductory unit, we explore characteristics of communities. Year after year, my students tell me that Elmhurst is a strong community, because Elmhurst people respect each other, care for each other, and tolerate each other's diverse perspectives. In this time of extreme difficulty, we are all in this together. The safety of the Elmhurst community, its teachers, and their families depend on this decision. Thank you. Jennifer Saborn. I am a former teacher, now school administrator, and a parent in this community. The task of planning school reentry has been a tremendous effort with every question and decision giving ample thought and consideration. I don't believe that any school district would make a decision that isn't in the best interest of its students and staff. If a school cannot open safely, which means no nurse, no air conditioning, no PPE, inability to maintain social distancing, then the school should not reopen. However, if Elmhurst 205 can open its schools safely, it has an obligation to the children to do so. Safe doesn't mean comfortable, and safe doesn't mean a return to normal or pre-pandemic conditions. Safe means in compliance with IDPH and CDC recommendations and adhering to additional guidance offered by the DuPage County Health Department. If the district can comply with the health and safety requirements provided by those organizations, then schools should reopen. If classes need to be staggered or in a hybrid model, in order to adhere to social distancing, this is preferred over no onsite at all. The children in our community need school. Remote instruction is not a substitute for in-person instruction. I do worry about my daughter entering kindergarten, who will wonder why she has to wear her mask all day. She will wonder where her friends from Madison are, since she's still starting in a new school. She will wonder who her new teacher is. My daughter has special needs, and she requires specialized instruction and related services in order to have a meaningful education. Expecting her to form a relationship with a teacher she has never met and trying to learn from this person virtually equates to almost no education at all. My daughter deserves an education. All of our children deserve an education. If our schools can be opened safely, I urge you to reopen them. Schools are a lifeline in the community, and there is simply no substitute. Our governing entities have called upon schools to provide onsite instruction, and I have no doubt the 205 can answer the call. Parents have a choice, staff have options. Please do not cave to social media pressure. Create and follow a safe school reentry plan. My kindergartner and my preschooler depend on this. Next comment, Adam Minnick. If the teachers are refusing for safety reason, I'm sorry, to teach for safety reasons, can they at least be required to conduct e-learning from their empty socially-distanced classrooms? If not, we will have more of the same issues we had in the spring, where they spend their time just teaching their own kids and baking sourdough bread. Next comment, Emily Hyde. I want to thank the board for their response to the ETC letter and the consideration this board has had to date for reflecting and deeply considering the needs of this community. The survey results were resounding, that a majority of families decided it was best for their children to return for learning in-person for the school year. For our, for our family, this decision was not made in spite of teacher's safety, but it was centered on the needs of our children and our assessment on what is frankly the inability to meet the needs of our children through remote learning long-term. We took into consideration the aids of our, age of our kids, pre-K and K, not effective for distance learning, the IEP needs of one of our kids who thrives with in-person resources, and also have monitored, monitored the DuPage COVID numbers. With an understanding that the most severe cases have occurred in long-term care facilities, the weighing of risks for us fell greatly in favor of providing our kids the in-person quality education that they deserve and need. I am also happy that families who felt this risk wasn't worth it for them can choose to keep their kids home. My biggest fear is that union pressures will now cause us to go fully remote, which would be a huge blow for our kids. Without a definitive way of knowing when and how we will have a treatment for this virus, I worry that demands will continue to be made for remote learning by the ETC with no ends in sight. Worse, there's continued to be no real answers on how remote learning will be delivered effectively or how success will be measured. If our educators were serious about providing quality remote education, simulated curriculum and sample lessons could have been recorded and shared as part of a plan to show this community how this can be done and prove that the number-one goal is to provide quality education to our kids when done remotely. Unfortunately, the lack of accountability and commitment to do so has given me zero reason to believe that the remote learning will be anything but an additional burden on families who cannot commit to dedicating two to three hours daily to facilitate this when young children are involved. I hope the board will consider decisions in other communities and districts to reverse course as secondary to the needs of the kids, parents, and taxpayers in our community, and push for as much in-person learning as possible. Thank you again. Next one, Kristin Gates. My name is Kristin Gates. I have been teaching Spanish at Sandberg for 20 years. I consider Sandberg my second home, which is why I'd stop at nothing to keep those who enter safe. I believe despite everyone's best efforts, it will be impossible to keep COVID out of our schools. We see daily local and national examples of the best-laid plans failing. I believe it will be difficult to learn a world language while masked. It will be challenging for students to hear my accent, for example. Also, I can't imagine teaching Spanish in a socially-distant classroom where students cannot have conversations with a partner or do group work. Remote learning will allow me to communicate clearly and effectively while pairing up students through breakout rooms and small-group conversations. While we all want this year to proceed normally, it cannot. We should all grieve for that, and as a parent, I'm grieving for that along with you. But after a lot of thought, I've come to the conclusion that it's better to grieve for missed school experiences than to grieve for lost students, parents, and teachers. This is why I'm advocating for remote learning for 205. Next one, Erin Epley. It was my understanding that if I signed up for remote, I could not switch to in-person in the event that the virus became less of a threat. However, it appeared that I could sign up for hybrid and switch to remote at any point. I spoke to other parents who had this understanding. I believe the survey numbers are skewed, skewed in terms of how many parents actually wanted their children to go back full-time. Many of us were just trying to secure a spot. Next comment, Reina Maldonado. Insane if kids go back to school wearing a mask. My 12-year-old won't last with his allergies and other conditions. Please take into consideration that majority of cities and states are doing remotely. It's insane to be fighting this 205 district for something that makes no sense. We have elderly teachers to think about. Life's more than anything. Lives matter more than anything. Next comment, Diane Falco. As I look around Elmhurst, I see baseball games, leagues being played at East End, Wilder Park, churches in attendance, tons of kids out playing with friends on the block together. No mask, fine. For my son, his special ed camps were shut down. All of his socialization has been eliminated since March. These kids playing on our block, he never gets invited. Those baseball games, his league, he usually plays, were canceled while other leagues are being played. The e-learning he did was fine, however, most of the time, I felt very slow and only helpful when I took over after the computer was shut down. Although he did do better during summer school, when workbooks were followed accompanied with instruction. A lot of the e-learning is waiting for others and too much breakdown, and too much background noises. We had quite a few technical difficulties, which was frustrating, and at times, we give up. He has regressed, and his only socialization is at school with peers of his age. His school friends love him, and he so desperately needs this to return ASAP. I really hope that you do not have the kids do 100% remote. I need my child in school. I am an essential worker. My husband is an essential worker. We are protected with masks, PPE, and I see no reason why teachers don't fall into the essential worker category. My son's physical, emotional, and educational needs are sinking. I can only do so much. Excuse me. Next comment, Billy Joe Bradford. My kids need to go back to school. This last spring was such a disappointment. My 12, 13, and 13-year-olds had to self-teach themselves with no face-to-face teacher interaction. They were mostly confused, and it felt like school was just over. E-learning can't be nearly as effective as face-to-face, and I can't stay home and homeschool manage the workload of three kids as a single mom while also trying to work. Our property taxes pay for these schools. I'm also concerned about the mental state of our children staying home. Teachers are essential workers. They need to fully teach in whatever manner that may be. Next comment, Rhonda Stein. I am surprised by the decision to have in-person instruction for the children of District 205 this fall. It seems irresponsible in the middle of a pandemic. There is so much, there is so much we do not know about the disease in children, how they spread it, and even whether we can say with certainty children will suffer no lasting effects. In addition, District 205 students do not live in a bubble. There are so many others to consider, teachers, staff, and the families these children go home to. Resuming in-person instruction will lead to increased community spread. The governor's COVID-19 task force still recommends masks and social distancing of six feet. How will that work with a five-year-old? I believe too much time has been wasted on this plan to return students to the classroom. This time would have been better spent assisting our teachers prepare to teach remotely to the best of their ability. And to be honest, sports are not a priority when you consider what participation may cost in human lives. This is deadly serious. More than 150,000 of our fellow students have lost their lives, I'm sorry, citizens have lost their lives to this horrible disease, and many more will, will never recover full health. Next comment, Stephen Dobrik. My name is Stephen Dobrik, and I am a person with many hats. I am a resident of Elmhurst, a father of two D205 students, a teacher, and a soccer coach at York. This past spring, I watched helplessly as COVID tore my soccer program apart, meaning leaving many girls devastated within our community. I did all I could to support my program through the guidance of my supervisors in our district. I even became a pseudo-Amazon delivery man, driving all around Elmhurst, dropping off spiritware orders to over 30 different homes, like many of our spring coaches. Still, I felt short-changed and frankly, a little resentful that my seniors lost out on so many special rites of passage their senior year. As athletes, we hold on to those kinds of memories for ages. This was nobody's fault and the result of a global pandemic. These sacrifices were made by many of our seniors who can never get those opportunities back. What we are teaching our children, if we, what are we teaching our children if we ignore those sacrifices made in the spring? If we ignore the warning signs again and try to return to the normalcy too quickly, we could risk losing all sports this year. Is that something our community wants to see happen when we are already faced with shortened seasons? I know my heart could not handle another year like last year. Current trends of the virus continue to grow, and according to the IDPH specifically, in Elmhurst, the largest group of positive cases are people under 20. Our peer and neighboring schools such as Oak Park, Lyons Township, Leyden, Neberville 203, Indian Prairie 204, Main Township 207, Schaumburg 211, and Stevenson, who are all going full remote to start the school year. What is different in their communities? Viruses do not know boundaries of communities. They only know hosts. Many of these schools, along with our district, are considered leaders in education for our state. Why is it that they can provide rigorous, engaging opportunities for remote learning and we cannot? Our teachers are ready. We just need the green light to prepare. If we choose to open D205 without going fully remote, we are putting this senior class at jeopardy for losing out and having to make the same sacrifices that we, that were made last year. Next comment, Amy Lichen. My son is an eighth grader at Bryant and relies on a classroom aide to successfully meet the goals and objectives of his IEP. Because of his diagnosis of Kabuki Syndrome, he is considered to be immune-compromised. Based on his diagnosis and the lack of clear direction and information for how his day-to-day will look like returning to school, I have begun, I have decided to begin his school year remote learning from home. He had his most successful ESY experience this summer because of the one-on-one instruction he received from Ms. Strider and Mr. Fisher. If he could continue to receive live instruction from his teachers and aides, then I am confident the parameters of his IEP would be seamlessly met. Please consider keeping our students' classroom aides to meet with them remotely, to support their IEPs, and to continue to provide opportunities for them to meet with their teachers and specials remotely, one-on-one. Next comment, Jennifer DeBoscher. Sorry. I lived in Elmhurst for 25 years, and hopefully, we can all say many positives about this town. I know I can, and the D205 has been one of those positives until lately. I am hoping this can be changed by Dr. Moyer taking the time and ego-strength to listen to the educators of the district and show respect and recognition, instead of lying about them. That will make a more positive experience for all. There is no one good answer right now to the question of how to educate our students that will make everyone happy, but there is best practice. Best practice would be to consider the safety of the students, staff, and all families. In my opinion, this would be to choose remote learning for all students in 205. Or at least let the staff with medical needs or family with medical histories choose to work remotely and let them know of this assignment immediately. Based, best practice would also be to consider not only the safety guidelines, but to think beyond and see how practical these can or cannot be implementing in the school district and school buildings. Kids are not robots and cannot be programmed to wear a mask appropriately and not social distance at recess, on the bus, or when the teacher is helping another student. I know there are temperature checks each day that are supposed to be done at home, but what if a student or staff member has COVID unknowingly and is asymptomatic and fever-free but able to pass on the virus? Finally, as a school social worker of 30 years, I have seen the social-emotional development of children and teens around me flourish during the pandemic and healthy families. Since March, family members are spending more time at home and together. There is more laughing, more activity, more discussion happening in the home more than ever. Yes, there are disagreements with all this time together, but in healthy families, they can be communicated and problem-solved. Has it been tougher for families who have experienced financial hardship and abuse? Sadly, yes. However, kudos to D205, the foundation, and families for providing food and community resources. Systems, whether they are comprised of a family or a department or a school building or district, work better when problems are heard and solutions are well-thought-out, and best practices is delivered to all. We will get through this pandemic, and the wonder, excitement, and the wonder, excitement and thrill of a normal school year will return. Please have faith in the D205 educators that they will do their best with the students. With three children from Fisher, Churchville, and York, I know I do. Thank you. Next question, Janet Cheng. Can you help us understand how much e-learning prep the teachers have been able to do? Can I request kids in our e-learning pod to be in the same D205 online sessions with the same teacher? Next comment, Susan Ledauer. You asked, the parents answered, 85% want in-person learning. You came up with a reasonable, thoughtful plan. Please don't let the vocal minority change that. Our children need in-person learning. This is being accomplished successfully everywhere else. You can do it too. Next comment, Stephanie Ernst. Writing to ask the board to push for an in-person school. My family will have a kindergartner and second grader, and they are not capable of having an enriching experience online. My family will have a kindergartner and second grader and they are not capable of having an enriching experience online. They struggle to stay focused and desire a routine with their peers and teachers. With energy to burn and a need for structure, e-learning is a disservice to these kids. I don't know one Lincoln parent that does not feel the same way and I am very involved in this community. I know these are very hard times, but it is in the best interest of the children emotionally and mentally to keep moving on. This virus is not showing a threat to children and masks are highly effective at controlling the spread of germs. Parents that I know will also be very good to not send their kids if they show any signs of a sniffle. This community is ready to move forward. Next question, next comment, Heather Walker. My child needs to be in school to be engaged as learning for her is better in person. Socially, she needs to be in school as online learning is very isolating. She needs a routine which includes getting out of bed, getting dressed to go to school, not sitting in bed doing e-learning in her pajamas. I understand that they must wear masks and social distance, but I know my child is willing to do that to be back at school. She did not find e-learning at all engaging and remotely difficult or remotely difficult, and she needs to be challenged. Please, please give these kids a chance to prove they can handle this. Next comment, Keely Muller Whitzel. I urge the D two oh five Board of Education to follow many of our surrounding districts and begin the school year remotely. You have not provided parents, teachers and staff confidence that your plan will truly keep students and teachers safe. Many of the school districts D two oh five highly regards have decided the best safety precaution is to start remote. This included Naperville two oh three and four and Stevenson High School. Also CPS has made the same decision. We all want our schools to open, however, with increased COVID cases in the last few weeks, that would be reckless at this time. Next comment, Jen Gallagher. This virus is terrifying and the thought of going back to my elementary school full days with full class loads terrifies me. I'm afraid to bring this virus home to my family. I do not feel it is safe for the students and the staff to go back at this time. I would feel much more comfortable starting remote and working towards getting back to schools. I know with proper training and support, the teachers can do amazing job with remote learning. We just need to feel supported. Please support us. Next comment, Liz Leonard. Dear Board, I want to thank you for your extra hours and hard decision-making in this unusual time. There are no decisions that will make everyone happy. I am writing to urge you to leave the in-person hybrid model as a choice. As reported, eighty-five percent of District two oh five wants this model. Please do not be swayed by the fifteen percent who after being on Facebook for a week seem to be the squeakiest wheels. Do not cave to these few. I also feel as though a majority of teachers want to go back, being friends with many. People unhappy with the plan are always the loudest. The kids need to be in schools so they can talk to, see teachers a few times a week. Most teenagers aren't self-motivated, so remote isn't great, no matter how it's set up. Even only being in school two days a week is worrisome, so please let the, please let the eighty-five percent keep their choice. Thank you for your time. Next comment, Tanya Sutter. Our children need to go back to school for so many reasons. They need to get back on a normal schedule and start learning again. It's important for them to interact with other students and their teachers in a safe environment. As a parent, I am constantly educating my child to wear a mask, maintain social distance and wash their hands. Now it's the educator's job to teach my child and get them ready for their future. Teaching is essential, just as the employees of grocery stores, hospitals and our police fire departments. This is such a critical time for these children. So many things have been taken away from them. I understand the importance of people's healths and lives, but we can't fear it and stop living. So many children are dealing with depression and anxiety. Do we need to create another pandemic? Please consider everyone in this situation. Next comment, Amy Thompson. My name is Amy Thompson and Fall twenty twenty marks my twenty-second year at York and thirty-first as an educator. I served as both a counselor with my own caseload of students and as a college, sorry, and career counselor at York. In this work, I have found my calling. It's an exciting, dynamic, demanding and rewarding career. The hours are long and the work is endless. In fact, my husband yells at me all the time to stop working so much. I give so much because I care so much. I'm in good company. The educators in our district have given their hearts and souls to nurturing our students. The York counselors and I take great joy helping students forge their own path and launch into their life after York. It's a privilege and an ever-exhausting process. This pandemic has brought so many challenges to us all. Moving to remote learning in the spring resulted in me completely altering my schedule and to ensure I was accessible at times when students wouldn't need to check in with classes or work with teachers. I still work many long hours and answered an overwhelming amount of email. I even put together a couple of special parent family programs to ease concerns about post-high school decisions. The pandemic has upended so much and I continue working really hard to stay connected with what is happening behind the scenes in college admission offices and on campus while campuses while sharing what I learn at York, with York families. This summer has not provided much downtime. Adding to that, every day my husband goes to work, I have to wonder if he will be infected when he returns home, making our home unsafe and putting us both at risk. As an ER doctor, he is seeing all this firsthand. He has to gear up in significant ways for every shift. He's reading everything he can to stay on top of the latest, most reliable research and shares what he learns with me. This is why I'm certain that remote learning is the best option. Even with strict mask usage, hand washing and strict social distancing in classrooms, which may not even be possible in many spaces, there are so many other situations that set us all up for exposure. Buses without social distancing, crowded hallways, passing periods. The lack of HIPAA filtration in the school, HIPAA, sorry. Interior classrooms and offices with poor ventilation, just to name a few of the most serious issues. He tells me that COVID cases are on the rise in significant ways in the suburbs. I hear his stories of otherwise healthy young people who are suffering mightily and sometimes dying from COVID despite the lack of preconditioning, pre-existing conditions. The fact is, the medical and public health community still does not have it under control, under control. We would all love to have a normal year, but things aren't normal. The fast few, the past few months have brought on the grieving process for all of us in so many ways, some very tangibly as people have lost loved ones and or jobs or income due to COVID and others less concretely, concretely, as we struggle with all that has been lost. Family celebrations, rites of passage, connecting with others, ability to move freely. We've struggled along with you, facing many of the same stressors. We educators don't live in a separate world from everyone else and yet many of the comments I've read from people in the community seem to think we are untouched. But we are grieving and worried too. I've done a lot of grief counseling in my twenty-one years. It's gut-wrenching and doesn't only come with losses like death. Things won't be normal because they can't be normal and we can all grieve over the loss, but please don't add more grief to an already terrible situation. A terrible, difficult time by assuming the worst situation of us educators. It is my hope that we can find a way to meet the needs of all of our students. I really want to see them in person, but it's dangerous to taste, take unnecessary risks. We need to find creative solutions to keep safely connect, kids safely connected to each other and to help them learn as best they can in a very stressful time. I've shared my thoughts with my fellow ETC members on ways we can support students and keep everyone safe through remote learning. I think we all agree, some, some just, some degree of in-person contact could be safe, given the right level of protection and in smaller numbers than the current plan allows. Focusing on our at-risk population, it's my sincere hope and I know many, many of my professional peers agree that we can find a more workable solution. We all care deeply about the D two oh five community and finding the right answers requires striking a really delicate balance. I can confirm one definitive truth I have learned. We will all get through this by working together. Next comment. Jennifer Hopkins. I strongly believe the district should make every effort to have elementary students in school in person full-time this year, as advised by multiple public health groups. Remote learning is not effective or appropriate for very young children. In addition, I believe the district should continue with the hybrid approach for middle and high school students. Again, face-to-face learning is very important for them and multiple medical sources have stated that there have been significant increases in mental health issues for our kids during this pandemic. Our kids need to be able to have in-person school and we need to do what is needed to make that happen. The district's plan includes numerous safety measures to support a return to school in person. The results from the parent survey show that the overwhelming majority of parents in this community want this for their kids and the district has a responsibility to be the community, to the community. Next comment. Celia Grabs. I just wanted to thank the board for their commitment to in-person instruction for our children in the twenty twenty-one school year. My children really need in-person school this year. One of the children has a five oh four and his need for social emotional learning amongst his peers is very great. All of my children do better with in-person instruction. Not only for their educational growth, but for their social emotional well-being. I'm a full-time working mom with little to no help with e-learning and it did not go well for our family in the spring. I have a health condition that puts me at high risk for COVID and I still feel the loss of education and some social emotional learning poses a greater risk to our family than does the risk of COVID. According to the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics, in-person school is truly what's best for our children this year. Next comment. Megan Smith. It is imperative that our children, it is imperative to our children's mental health to be in school. In addition to how critical it is for their ability to learn. As a parent, not only are we working full-time jobs, but we don't know how to teach. Nothing means more to us than our kids and we are not setting them up for success if they're not in the classroom. In addition, nothing is more important than their safety and the safety of our teachers. We are open to all options to allow us to get back to school, temperature checks, all-day masks, face shields, personal sanitizers at desks and separators. We're also open to being creative with the school day and curriculum. Thoughts, half-day, every day, lunch and recess at home, specials over Zooms. What, whatever we can do to get the children back in the classroom for the core curriculum. Please let, please let us try using creative solutions. Others can opt out and do virtual learning if they are concerned. Thank you. Next comment, Jana Bendick. I want to start by thanking the board for taking the time to read through all the community's comments and concerns. I understand that this is a difficult position for everyone involved to be in and that the situation is constantly changing. That being said, at this time, I think we need to turn to our educators and school staff to determine what is best for our students. If they think remote or hybrid is the best way to start the school year, then we need to trust that that's to be accurate. These are the same people we entrust our children's life with most days of the year. We trust them to protect our children from fires, tornadoes and active shooters. I have zero doubt that they have their students' best interests and safety at heart. Teachers often refer to their students as their children or kids out of love, care and affection. Their desire to start the year remotely comes from these same feelings of love for their students. The sooner a decision is made, the sooner our teachers can solidify their plan for how to amplify their remote or hybrid plans. The sooner a decision is made, the sooner families can make, can start to make their appropriate childcare plans. And the sooner a decision is made, the sooner we can begin to determine the best way to support our students with special needs, IEPs and students who receive free and reduced lunch. Again, thank you for your time and hard work. Next comment, Sherry Romano. Teaching and learning is the most essential aspect of society. Science supports kids going back to the classroom. Experts warn of the damage we are doing to our kids by keeping them out of school. Most parents support their children returning to the classroom. It can be done safely. My cerebral middle schooler cried every day last year in e-learning. She completed her worksheet within minutes. She felt unsupported and unchallenged. I feel her love for learning has been lost. My high schooler and her friends sit around and discuss how easy it is to cheat with e-learning. There is no independent thinking when you have Google to access every answer, translate every Spanish phrase or answer every math question. My kids are depressed. They are anxious. They have nothing to look forward to. They feel abandoned. I have to quit my job and go on unemployment as most parents do. I know the teachers and administration want to do best what's for our children, what is best for our children and teachers. Countless people seek living in Elmhurst due to the amazing school system. I appreciate the support they have given to getting our kids back to school safely. Next comment, Goriana Alexander. My husband and I pay huge taxes and we do so to enable our kids to have an education in public schools. It is absolutely crazy that school five days a week is not considered essential and grocery stores, liquor stores and pot dispensaries are considered essential. This is causing a significant impact to our children's mental and educational well-being. I am strongly requesting that school goes back August seventeenth and full-time. E-learning was big, the biggest failure and I believe we are tremendously behind. Waiting for a vaccine is unacceptable and we can't live in bubbles. Wearing a mask and appropriately social distancing should work perfectly fine as the rest of us are working and working parents can't afford to stay home to teach their kids. Next comment, Terry Ladafsky. I know this is a difficult decision for everyone, but in the end, we can't take any chances when it comes to health and safety. The district has yet to provide any sort of plan for what will happen when, not if, a child or staff member gets the virus. It is a shame you have wasted these many months not putting together a strong e-learning plan. Why can't the district hire a large amount of aides to help the children at risk who are having difficulty with the e-learning? It seems as if you're lacking creativity for solutions. Close the schools for e-learning. Keep everyone safe. Keep everyone alive. Thank you. Next comment. Adam Co, I'm not going to do good on this one. Kotlarsik. I am a teacher at the Illinois Mathematics and Science Academy and my spouse teaches in District two oh five. We entered tonight after six months of data on the pandemic with overwhelming evidence that remote learning, which my school has also chosen, is the safest course for the health of students, staff and faculty. This fact is indisputable. Across the country, schools have already opened with face-to-face options are failing. The Gwinnett County District in Georgia had to send home over two hundred and sixty staff after one day. Corinth School District in Mississippi has sent home over one hundred elementary, middle, middle and high school students. Five districts in Tennessee have sent students and staff home. As a board, you have the opportunity to lead, to do what your teachers work, to do what your teachers work hard to do every day, to educate. You can say to the community, we hear you and we also understand the ruthless mathematics of virology has spared no school or institution in the country and will not spare ours. You can say to the employees and children entrusted to your care, it is our duties as leaders to make the hard decisions that make your lives our top priority, even if those decisions are somewhat unpopular in some circles. Whatever other considerations and community pressures, it is your responsibility as a board member, member to consider. We must ultimately acknowledge that the course of action that will keep the greatest portion of those young people and adults who are in your charge, healthy and alive, is clear, remote learning. Next comment, Sharon Emmy Santos. I have been an educator for thirty years, twelve of which have been in District two oh five. We need to work together to provide the best instruction that includes a minimum risk of exposure for all children and school personnel. The current plan does not provide enough protection. Specialists who are asked to go into multiple classrooms a day at the elementary level are at a level of risk that is unacceptable. One hundred kids plus kids a day. Spacing is impossible with the large class sizes. I have dedicated most of my life to teaching and now it seems that life is at risk. I don't understand how we got here. I have read detailed plans from other districts that provide a safe path to instruction while supporting families that may need childcare during the day. Details of what remote learning will look like that calms the fears of parents should have already been ready, should have been ready early to show it will not be the same thing as the spring, emergency instruction. The community must come together and help each other, not live in the past and berate teachers for instruction that they were not prepared for at all and who also had their hands tied in many aspects of the emergency plan. We can do better to prevent any loss of life or long-term effects from this illness. We can do better with preparing our teachers and families on how best to teach and learn remotely. Let's get specific and clear about any plan moving forward. But as our administration has said numerous times, health and safety of students and staff, along with their families, must be the first priority. Excuse me. Are the decisions that were made for in-person or hybrid instruction following that principle? I have to say from the information I have provided, the answer is no. Next comment, Amy Wellman. I'm a parent of an incoming first grader at Hawthorne and fully support her returning for an in-person education. She is very young and did poorly in the spring learning at home. She doesn't have the maturity to understand that mom and dad are her teachers and she doesn't have the attention span to spend the day learning independently. While I'll support, I support elementary aged children back in the classroom every day, I do understand a hybrid model may be needed. I do not believe that the solution to this problem is the one hundred percent remote learning model that the union is demanding. Are there other options? Could the children spend a shorter day in school? Could they go before lunch or after lunch and learn the most basics subjects while eliminating some, eliminating some of the specials? We chose to live in Elmhurst because of the schools and the community. Now is the time for the community to come together and do what is right for our children. I'm pleased the board is taking the time to hear from parents and I look forward to the decision. Next comment, Kalina Giencopoulos. Next comment, Kalina Giencopoulos. For the emotional and social well-being of our children, I believe that full-time in-person is the most beneficial to our children. Our children crave being in and around their teachers and peers and benefit from hearing each other's questions and comments and working together as a class or small group in their lessons. Please consider in-person instruction for the instruction for the school year. Next comment, just says LaUzi. While online remote learning is fine, I am so angry that the principals and supers and all authority have zero plan in place to go remote with a live teacher. Nothing has been done or worked on for months. Next comment, Carolyn Doherty. If there is any form of a remote learning, it absolutely must involve a teacher who is live. Please supply all necessary equipment to make this happen. It's a very fair compromise on the issue. Our children simply will not learn if we repeat the spring remote model. Next comment, Matt Johnson. My name is Matt Johnson, and I'm a teacher and instructional coach at York. I grew up in Elmhurst, and I'm blessed to have the opportunity to work with the students and families in this community. I love my job, and I love these kids. However, so many legitimate concerns regarding returning our students to school, I have this burning question. What is the, what is it that Elmhurst two oh five has seemingly figured out about how to safely go back to school that nearly every other district in the area has decided is impossible? Do we truly trust this plan over the collective leadership and wisdom of all the other surrounding schools? Next comment, Anne Dakens. I have dedicated myself to teaching middle school for eighteen years, the last decade with, with the wonderful students and families in Elmhurst. Why? Because I do what, do, what I do is a calling, one that I knew from the age of five that I would answer. There is something incredibly special about watching the light bulb illuminate when a student has a profound learning moment and watching students work together to turn what they have learned into something new and watching students support each other when there are struggles and struggles and hearing "thank you for helping me" from a student. I miss that. I wish we could go back in time and recapture all of that, but this new reality has determined that we cannot right now. As a mother of four, I am sad that school right now can no longer be the safe place where they learn, grow, and interact with peers and teachers. However, I am dedicated to teaching and building relationships with students remotely in order to keep safe what we cherish most, our kids and families. Thank you. Next comment, Lexi Hughes. I feel strongly that District two oh five schools should be open for in-person class as planned, class planned, as planned on August twenty-fourth. The district has developed a plan to allow for the safe return of students and staff to the classroom. They have implemented guidelines to limit the number of students in classrooms, passing periods, and establish safety guidelines based on recommendations from our scientific and medical leaders. It is absolutely impossible to deliver the same level of education that our students deserve in an online format. This was evident when assessing the online structure in the spring. Our students need to be able to engage with their teachers and fellow students in a classroom setting. This is an extremely part of the learning process and cannot be achieved online. Experts have stated that the spread of this disease can be controlled with appropriate safety measures. Our schools will have those safety measures in place. The virus is not going to disappear, and we are going to have to take steps to carefully and cautiously live in a world where it exists. The fatality rates for children and adults under the age of fifty is almost zero, recognizing that people with, I'm not sure, I don't know what this word is, comorbidities have a greater risk. In those cases, we need to allow for online learning and teaching capabilities. An overwhelming majority of the Elmhurst community has requested in-classroom room learning for our schools. A large portion of our taxes are dedicated to supporting our schools. We cannot continue to make the assumption that our children are receiving the same level of education in an online format. We need to focus these tax dollars on ensuring that our children and their teachers return to the classroom safely. There is currently no end game. At what point will it be safe for teachers and servants to go to, return to this classroom? If we continue with this strategy, our children will be out of school indefinitely. This is unacceptable. Next comment, Heather Herst. I cannot believe the union president and forty-one teachers were part of this committee, and now they are pushing to not open schools. The plan was extremely thoughtful and was prepared with a lot of research and a very diverse committee. Teachers and staff are very much essential workers, essential to show up and ensure these kids have proper classroom instruction and engagement with their teachers and other students. These kids will be at a major disadvantage from a diligence and interest in learning if they have to do it all through a screen. Essential workers today are working for fifteen dollars an hour at grocery stores. Teachers have a decision to make: resign and find a new career while this is going on, or go back to work. Next comment. Mary Ann Refield. We need to work collectively as a community to help our students in this difficult time. We need to come together as a community and not blame and shame those who have different perspectives than we do. I hope we can find some empathy for everyone's situation and be curious about ways that we can help each other during this very challenging time. Next comment, Daisy Bono. I prefer the choice for online learning. I understand the online learning is different and not the same quality as in-person learning. I just cannot offer my son to have COVID due to his underlying health issues. Thank you. Next comment, Ellen Marie Stein. As a resident of Elmhurst, public health worker, and alum of District two oh five, I am horrified that the school board is considering in-person learning for the fall of twenty twenty. The COVID nineteen pandemic has taken the lives of over a hundred and fifty thousand Americans. The positivity rate in Elmhurst is rising, and there is no evidence whatsoever that you can safely conduct in-person school when community spread is so high. In a recent MMR, MMWR from the CDC, a summer camp in Georgia, which used the, used most recommended precautions, still had a high attack rate for COVID nineteen in spite of their efforts. This issue not only affects the safety of the students, but also their families, teachers, staff, administrators, and the community at large. Public safety should be utmost important to the district. While there's some evidence that young children may be less likely to spread COVID nineteen and less likely to have severe outcomes, children do not live in a vacuum. Every day, they will be exposing themselves, parents, grandparents, teachers, staff, administrators, and consequently their families, as well as anyone else of their contacts they encounter. There will be few people in our community who will be untouched, given how infectious COVID nineteen is. In addition, we still do not know the long-term impacts COVID nineteen has on the human body. So children who don't get very sick now may suffer long-term consequences we cannot anticipate. It is incredibly irresponsible to put children back in classrooms based on what we know. This time before the school year begins would be better spent planning for a fully remote school year, equipping teachers to be the most effective in that, effective in that medium, and planning how the district will still provide its social services to students in need during this confusing time. Every effort should be made to make that remote experience the best it can be from the beginning and to educate parents and community members not to accelerate the spread of the virus in our community. If you choose to move forward with in-person learning in spite of this, the consequences will be your responsibility. Next comment, Deena Booth. Based on the findings of the recent return-to-school verification survey, eighty-five percent of parents want their children to go back to school in instruction. Follow the science behind the virus and recommendations on how to return to school from qualified health organizations, not the politically driven beliefs of the teachers' union. The taxpayers are your clients, and the board needs to give the majority of what they are asking for this fall. There has been little communication on how a full semester of e-learning will look different from this past spring session, which was subpar, subpar to say the least. Have the educators and staff been working on creative solutions for a meaty, straight, e-learning curriculum that will motivate and educate students virtually? If so, what does that look like and entail? Children have had a lot of practice with social distancing, wearing masks, and frequent hand washing when in public. This should be an easy transition for all, especially with the health and safety measures District two oh five will incorporate. Our children need hands-on learning, and in-school instructors are essential. So I'll just give you the total numbers of comments. There was a hundred and seventy-four comments that were in support of the open D two oh five plan. There were a hundred and thirty-three comments that were in support of remote learning. There were twenty-eight comments that did not take a position, and there were twenty comments that were duplicates and not addressed.
Thank you, Courtney. And just to review tho, all of those comments and any others we received, we will post on the website. So we'll follow up with that. Typically, the board does not reply or respond to comments at this time, but we do read them, and we've read the many emails we've received as well to really be listening to our community. So just a couple of things before I ask for a motion to go into closed session, which is the purpose of tonight's meeting. Just a reminder that Tuesday, August eleventh, at seven o'clock, is our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which will be here in District two oh five, and we will livestream that as well, like we did tonight. And at the end of our closed session, we will adjourn. There will be no action taken. So following closed session, we will just adjourn the meeting. So if there's nothing else, then if I could have a motion to go into closed session? Karen?
I move that the Board of Education enter closed session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. B, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And C, the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students.
There's an additional one, D. Can you just give it?
And D. The number is five I L C S one twenty slash two C eight to consider the district's response to an actual danger to safety of employees, students, staff, and the public.
I'll second. Motion made by Karen, second by Beth, so I will call the vote. Karen?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Courtney?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That's six ayes, no nays, one absent. So we will be going into closed session for the items read, and we will adjourn with no action taken at the end of that. All right, thank you.